Like to open this meeting to the Board of County Commissioners, Montrose County. It is Wednesday, June 15th, 9:30 in the morning. And welcome, everybody. We've got a big, full house today. Thank you for coming on. I appreciate it. We'll start with the invocation from Pastor Luke Hauser, and then Brandon will lead us in the pledge. If everybody will join us.
Thank you.
Good morning.
So, John Wilkes Booth, I don't know if you know, he had a brother named Edwin. And about two years before that horrible day at Ford Theater, Edwin was standing on a train platform. And there was a little boy who was about to fall, and he actually fell in front of an oncoming train. And Edwin grabbed the boy by the collar, pulled the boy to safety. And what has to be probably the craziest coincidence in all of history, that little boy was Robert Todd Lincoln, Abraham's son. And it's interesting to me that two men who grew up in the same family, had a lot of the same experiences, were both famous actors, became such different people. And so I wanted to pray today about who we are becoming. Because every grudge we hold, every idea we grab onto, every little act we do, has a profound impact on who we become. And so I wanted to challenge you, encourage you today, as you make decisions that affect other people's lives, it's not so much the outcome, but who you become in the midst of it. So I'd like to pray along those lines. So, God, I just thank you for these wonderful leaders, Lord, who really have become wonderful people. I'm so thankful for them. I pray that you would bless every leader in here, every person in here, God, that they would come to know you and walk with you. And, Lord, I pray that you would help us to be mindful with every decision who it's turning us into, who we are becoming. Lord, I pray we would become people of honor, Lord, people who would reach out and help rather than nurse a grudge and hate. I pray, Lord, that life would come from us, that love would come from our decisions, and that we would become people, maybe not great in being known, but great in the little acts we do. And it's in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge the Institute of Flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call, please.
Keith Caddy, District One.
I am here.
Sue Hanson, District Two.
Here.
Roger Rash, District Three.
Here.
Appears that we have a quorum. Is there anybody that's going to speak to us in public comment at this time? Okay, then I will say, at this time, the members of the public have issues of concern or interest to the board. All issues require further research. Will be forwarded to the appropriate staff for response at a later date time. Each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The format shall be limited to presentation only. The board will not engage with any speaker. Please.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Please state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Richard Brunton. I live at 22843 Horsefly Road in Montrose County. Monday, I took two mattresses to the landfill, and there was a charge of $10 each per mattress, but I wasn't allowed in unless I paid a dumping fee, which is $22.25. On top of that fee, so it's called a tipping fee, I feel that's a little bit harsh, a little bit exaggerated in price. Wonder if you can address this. I spoke with Mr. Laubie, the engineer, and he's looking into that. I believe he has a meeting this morning with Waste Management. To clarify on their website, that is a surcharge added, not just a dumping charge. So I urge you to use your power to keep it reasonable for people, and I would imagine that's why there's so much dumping on public lands, because there's discrepancies or high costs. So with the invocation this morning, I hope you use your powers to do something good about this. So, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please step forward and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Michael Dupre, 6859 Church Road, Olathe. We are landowners. One of the topics today that you guys will be reviewing, I just have a question about in my ignorance, and it has to do with signatures on the final plat and an approval of my request for subdivision. I have a conflict in that the lender, which is also requiring to release the land, requires an approval letter from the county. But I know the county should have the final stamp as it goes into archive records. And so I was trying to understand how I can get away from this dilemma, because we started with a local bank, and it was sold off, as they often do. So I'm in a catch-22 and didn't know who to address to ask in order for me to, you know, I have all the proper signatures and notarizations on the final plat, but the lender and the county. And the lender is saying, we'll sign it when the county gives an approval of this. And I understand that the county is the final signature, so it's sort of a back and forth. I didn't know what direction to go to get this to completion. I attended the meeting a couple of weeks ago with, pre-this meeting, that it was approved and so forth, that we met all compliance, as far as things to be paid, fees, taxes, everything. So I guess I'm at your mercy as to find out what to do here.
Okay, I'll tell you what, if we could have you speak with Steve White after the meeting, if that would be okay? And, yes, Steve?
If I could, Chairman, because this is on the agenda, this should be talked about during that agenda item.
Okay, that's fine.
Is that okay? Because I didn't know if I was going to be for the public out, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
So step back and wait.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to county managers' items.
And, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are no changes to the agenda today. I do want to take the opportunity with the board's permission to recognize five of our Road and Bridge employees that recently assisted with the Sims Maze of Fire, or the Sims Fire, as the Forest Service ended up calling it. These gentlemen did an outstanding job in the initial response, and also provided ongoing assistance until that incident was completely under control. So we've got a letter that we'd like to present each of them with, and I'll read that.
Would you please?
Now. So, "When the Sims fire started on May 19th, 2022, homes, property, and lives were immediately threatened. Containment of the fire and protection of the public required a rapid response. Heavy equipment and operators needed to be on-site quickly in order to construct fire lines and distribute water. Due to the location of the fire, Montrose County was in the best position to respond with the required equipment. As evacuation orders were issued and residents left their homes, Road and Bridge employees headed towards the fire. Their efforts in creating a fire line and refilling water tenders and brush trucks were critical in getting a handle on the fire through the evening and into the early morning hours. The initial efforts of the responders held until the following day, when the weather took a turn and brought snow and rain to knock down the flames. Road and Bridge continued to support the firefighters and other responding agencies in the days that followed until the incident was completely contained. The employees that responded were under no obligation to do so. They quite literally answered the call to contribute their time and skills when it mattered most. Their dedication was above and beyond and made a difference by keeping a dangerous wildfire from becoming much worse." So I'll just stress that, you know, there are other duties as assigned when it comes to any job and our jobs working for the county, but certainly driving heavy equipment on an active wildfire goes a little bit beyond other duties as assigned. And I'm very grateful for the attitude, the dedication, and the service of the employees that did respond. And so wanted to recognize Chad Geist, Curtis Milton, Jay Jensen, Jake Lucero, and Brandon Wallace from the Road and Bridge Department for their service. And as per usual, I think that we'd like to get a photo.
All right.
Great job.
We might need to take a D in the front.
All right, everybody look over here. All right. Okay, that's good. Cards full, so we got it.
One thing I'd like to say about this fire, it was actually in Ouray County, but the others did the need to stop that fire as soon as possible before it got into Montrose County. And county lines are, they're blurred a lot when people's homes and people's lives are in danger. We go to the call, and not just that group, but Fairgrounds group helped with giving them room for the firefighters and stuff to work their headquarters out of and everything. So the county of Montrose, they rose to the occasion. I think they did a great job. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All matters under the consent agenda are considered routine by the Board of County Commissioners and will be enacted with a single vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Discussion is deemed necessary. That item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
You have a resolution in there, Sue?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Number 16.
Thank you, Roger. With the exception of number 16, which is resolution number 44-2022.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay. Passed unanimously. Later, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tony. Next is General Business, County Management, Katie Ergerson, Communications Director.
I'm actually going to do her.
Sheldon.
Okay, Sheldon.
All right. So we're here to talk today about the Post Traumatic Stress Disorder Awareness Month. Katie had brought up the idea that this was something that we would want to talk about and ask for support on. Post-traumatic stress is a big thing in our military, which is why I'm probably more involved with it as that I see it, I have experienced, and these sorts of parts. But also that mental health has a big stigma. There's a lot in the news that's going on. There's a lot of traumas that are caused or are extension of somebody else's trauma. And the more that we make the awareness, the more we take the stigma away from talking about mental health and treatment and those issues, the more people that will be open to supporting for treatment, for help, and those sorts of things. One of the more interesting things, I love medicine, as probably you guys know, and one of the best things that have come from the conflicts over the last 20 years has really been advancements in medicine, as often happens. One of those interesting pieces is treatment of PTSD. You know, World War I, we called it shell shock, you know, and we kind of just, they did their own things, they disappeared and didn't really become part of society. In World War II, it was much the same, but a few interesting piece, that we had big things with motorcycle gangs and the rise of that in the 70s and 80s. And if you looked at, core of those were military, and that they'd no longer fit in, that some of them had found the motorcycles that were used in the war, and they bound together, they came together as a group, didn't really fit in with our society, because there's still these stigmas. You can't have, you know, something wrong and fit in. And now that we have figured out that there's treatments, it's become more common to have these treatments, they've really found that the best treatment is a group. That individual treatment, individual talking helps, but the very best treatment ever is as a group. So the more we talk about it, the more we make it okay for everybody to talk about their feelings, talk about their experience, and talk about what happened, the better we will all be as a society, because we will be healing those in our communities rather than just outcasting them. One of the other pieces is that also that trauma isn't just a military problem, that, and as we'll go through, that we'll see that there's numbers, a large number. It could be a traffic accident, it could be a personal assault, there's a lot of things that can cause these traumas. And one of the interesting pieces, nobody reacts the same. Nobody knows what any one trauma could be. You know, it could be the loss of a family member unexpectedly or early, it could be a traffic accident, it could be just seeing a fight that they're not even involved with, but that, that fear and the chemicals in our brain and the way that it changes it makes that a thing. And so we can't tell anybody that, hey, this trauma, oh, you should be fine, oh, you should be okay. We just don't know. Everybody's different. And so the more we talk about it, the more we get it open, and the more mental health support we get, the better our society is. So I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this this morning.
Thank you.
Is somebody going to read the?
He's going to read.
You will read it?
I will read it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, "Post-traumatic Stress Disorder Awareness Month, June 2022. Whereas post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, can occur after a person experiences trauma including, but not limited to, the stress of combat, rape, sexual assault, child abuse, bombings, accidents and natural disasters, and affects approximately 8 million adults in the United States annually. And whereas PTSD is associated with chemical changes in the body's hormonal system and autonomic nervous system, and is characterized by symptoms including flashbacks, nightmares, insomnia, avoidance, hyper vigilance, anxiety, and depression. And whereas approximately 60% of men and 50% of women will experience at least one trauma in their lives. And whereas combat-related PTSD stress among our men and women in the armed forces is significantly pronounced, given that they are often exposed to highly traumatic events for weeks, months, and even years. And whereas without treatment, PTSD can lead to alcohol and drug abuse, reliving the terror, heart attacks, depression, dementia, suicide, and stroke. And whereas despite its treatability, many cases of PTSD remain undiagnosed and untreated due to a lack of awareness of this condition and the persistent stigma associated with mental health conditions. And whereas raising awareness of this condition is necessary to remove the stigma and to encourage those suffering to seek proper and timely treatment that may save their lives. And whereas all citizens suffering from PTSD deserve our consideration, and those who are affected by PTSD from wounds received while protecting our freedom deserve our respect and special honor. Now, therefore, therefore be resolved that the month of June is designated as Post Traumatic Stress Disorder Month, to bring awareness to those with PTSD, and to encourage people to reach out to their fellow community members to provide support and remove the stigma associated with this disorder." Last one, too?
You're fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is a really nicely written resolution. I don't know if Katie did that, but we appreciate your words and appreciate the support that you do provide for veterans that are experiencing PTSD in our community. So, thank you, Sheldon.
I think, you know, and you brought up the motorcycle gangs and stuff, and now we've kind of flipped that. Motorcycle-ing is very important to veterans and police forces. They all have their groups, and that's part of that camaraderie and that getting together and sharing of ideas. And in 2019, I did Run for the Wall, and it was mostly veterans going, there's 1,600 of us, from California to Washington, DC, to end up at the Vietnam Memorial. We ended up at the Tomb of the Unknown. And the cathars, the process that I saw some of these veterans go through, especially the Vietnam veterans, that really did not get the recognition that they should have when they came home. And this is all about them and honoring the Vietnam Memorial Wall, the Tomb of the Unknown soldiers and those things. But, you know, just the growth that we saw and the healing that we saw, our group had like 800 motorcycles in it, and traveling across country, and the way the nation responded to us. And I never bought a meal. The towns that we stopped in for breakfast, lunch, and dinner all provided the meals. And that was all kind of that.
Healing process.
That our veterans got to experience. And it was very cathartic for me as well, in some of the issues that I've dealt with. And I never went to war. I was one of the fortunate ones that did not have to go to war. But there are some of our ladies and men out there that really did go through some tough stuff. And then we talk about our law enforcement folks and medical personnel, and, you know, these folks are seeing some really horrendous stuff on a regular basis. And thank goodness we have these conversations, and we have these resolutions to bring it to the forefront. So I'm grateful for what you do. I'm grateful for what the Warrior Resource Center does for us and our veterans and the different military groups that we have around here, the VFW, the American Legion, the Riders, and Patriot Guard, and all of them. And it's all part of that getting together and working through problems that other people can't relate to. And, you know, unless you've been there, you're just not going to, you're not going to be able to relate. And that's what, that's what you're talking about, that group therapy is truly the answer to this problem. So, thank you.
Well, and fortunately, April Hurd is here. She's a new director of the Warrior Resource Center, and really is, she's hiding in the back. That's where I like to hide, but I knew I had to walk to the podium, so I was in the front row today. But it's really about creating that space that's available. And that's where I've seen it in our community, where veterans have done, the Vietnam veterans, 20 years of therapy without much success, without really making a lot of progress. And within two years of having the group here locally where they could talk about these, and having that profound change in their outlook.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm just glad modern medicine has finally figured out there's a problem called PTSD, and they're actually doing something about it now. I think the groups are very important for the military and law enforcement, because military, they know what happened, and they really don't want outsiders to be in that group, because they don't know what they went through. And I think that working, working through these issues amongst the group that's been there and done that, I think it's very important to them. I see that happen in law enforcement, coming out of law enforcement. You always see the retired cops getting together, because they've seen a lot of bad things out there for years, and it helps them. I think it's almost like therapy for themselves.
It really is. And I think it's fortunate, we have law enforcement for the county, the sheriff's office has programs in place where if somebody experienced something, they have people to talk to, they have that support immediately available. And I think that's probably one of the best things I've seen.
Yeah, the peer support groups and stuff, they do it at the police department now, too, which is amazing. So it's a good thing.
That is amazing.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
And I'd like to congratulate April on her new position, so, exciting times.
Welcome to Montrose. Okay, let's move on, and next is.
Want to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, we need to make a motion, too. Do you have a motion for me, Sue?
I think Roger should make this.
Roger, do you have a motion for me?
Mr. Chair, at this time, I would move for the authorization on the board's signature on a proclamation declaring May as PTSD Awareness Month.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All the, is it May or June? That's what I thought.
June, I'm sorry.
It said May here, so I thought it was June. Do you want to redo the motion?
I will correct the motion to be the month of June.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
That's what I get for reading.
I saw that, too. But I remember what Sheldon said. Anyway, all those in favor, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay. Passed unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Next, Region Chin, Jan Sinto.
Correct.
What you have for us today? And state your name and your address, please. It can be a business address.
Sure. Dan Sinto, I represent Region 10 League of Economic Assistance and Planning, 145 South Cascade, Montrose.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm here to present some background to a letter that is part of the ongoing process of administering the Community Development Block Grant Program through Region 10's Business Loan Fund. That is part of your package. Little bit of history about this program is, this is our eighth contract with the state of Colorado through its Office of Economic Development and International Trade. The contract goes for a period of four years. The original contract's dollar amount that gets used to invest in businesses within the Region 10 service area is typically about $350,000, and that number is calculated by the state based on population. As you may know, there's a lot going on in our area. We have been before the board in the past to get what's called a contract amendment, to get additional funding from the state to be utilized in our loan program called CDBG ED, which is Community Development Block Grant Economic Development. What happens is, the state provides a grant to Region 10. Region 10 loans that money to businesses that are starting up or expanding, and it's an integral product that we offer that helps businesses within the area where banks typically fear to lend based on their differences in who they serve. That being said, our original contract was $348,000. We did a contract amendment back in March of '21 for $500,000, and we are asking for an additional $250,000 for two projects specifically that we have upcoming to fund, let's see, what was it? Yeah, we're looking at assisting with some equipment financing for a business that's going to start up in the Colorado Outdoors Project. And we're also looking at a project in the West End for an ownership transfer of an existing business in Nukla. That being said, a little bit more history on this. The current contract is our eighth contract, our being Montrose County and Region 10's eighth contract with the state's OEDIT program. Currently, the funding for this contract specifically has helped a hair salon in Peonya, a chocolate shop in Ouray, Italian restaurant in Gunnison, a coffee roaster in Crested Butte. In Montrose County specifically, we helped a coffee shop create a new location. We did a commercial relocation for an electrical contractor that is doing very well. When we started with them, there was five employees, and now they're at 35. Also, we did a partner loan with a local bank to help a local manufacturer obtain a larger facility to increase employment there. We also did a deal with a startup preschool, and currently, the most recent project we worked on is a motel renovation on East Main. That being said, these projects that are associated with contract number eight have created or retained 133 jobs, which is a cost, if you take a look at the funding, of about $6,375 per job created or retained. And in the world of economic development, that's exceptionally good value. That being said, I'm looking to have the county sign the attached document allowing Region 10 to go before the Financial Review Committee of the state of Colorado to get this contract amendment approved. Does anybody have any questions about the program or how it works?
So the 250, the extension, that's already earmarked. You have specific projects?
I do.
So the $200,000 is going to the restaurant in Graded Colorado Outdoors? Is that?
It's not a restaurant, it's a manufacturer.
Equipment, okay.
Yep.
All right.
The contract period is a four-year period. Our current contract is going to expire in November. That, the projects that we're currently looking at really don't, we don't want to wait for that new contract. It's very common for the regions throughout, there's 14 of us throughout the state, that when they exhaust funding, they apply for an amendment. That's very common. I think it's amazing that they felt that $350,000 would last us four years, and now we're going to close out the contract at 1.2 million. So there's a lot of economic benefit to our region. And a little more backstory is that Montrose County acts as the fiscal agent for the other five counties that Region 10 represents. It's, you're considered a pass-through. So Region 10 funds the deals, and then we get reimbursement from the state that runs through Montrose County. It's a great program. It's been in existence locally for, as far as my research goes, over 25 years, but the program itself originated over 35 years ago without any material changes in it. Typically, the criteria is there has to be job development in the low to moderate income categories. That's a That, that's the criteria. So to go into a little more detail, the grants that we receive are calculated by a dollar amount of $20,000 for each job created in the low to moderate income category. So if we do a $200,000 deal, you can back out the numbers that we're assisting. And, you know, probably the most fun project I worked on was the daycare in Montrose at a time during the pandemic that we really needed that.
We did indeed. Yeah.
Thanks, Sue. All right, let's see.
Any other questions?
No.
Do you have anything else that you were going to go into?
I do. I just want to mention that I'll be back to close this current grant out in November and then initiate the start of contract number, what we call number nine. That's all.
Okay.
Great.
I just want to thank you for a job well done. I mean, I've been with Region 10. John sits on that board as well. And it's an honor to work with you guys and see the professionalism and all the work that you get done. When I get your report at our board meetings and I see how many businesses that we've affected through this program, it's pretty amazing. It's a lot of dollars that comes into our region. A lot of it is absorbed right here in Montrose County. But it's region-wide and it helps the West End, it helps here, Gunnison. We've seen stuff in Hinsdale County, up in Lake City, Peonya. I mean, it's pretty amazing. Delta's another big recipient. So it's an important job and I do appreciate everything you do and what Michelle does over there at Region 10, so.
Thanks, Roger. You know, to that point, this is one of the products that we have as far as the Business Loan Fund goes. It constitutes roughly one-third of the current funding that's out in our region. We're also an SBA lender, so a lot of our other funding comes from that. And it's an honor to do the program.
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
You may. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the, approve your signature on the extension request from Region 10 between the state of Colorado and Montrose County by $250,000.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed nay. Passed unanimously.
Thanks, Dan.
You got a signature?
Yep.
Thank you.
And next, it looks like Facilities. Jennifer, what do you have for us?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry, Ken was not able to join us this morning. Jennifer Del Tonto, Facilities with the county. So we are before you this morning to request your consideration and possible approval and authorization on a bid award and contract in the amount of $9396,650 to walled architects and engineers for design engineering of the Montrose County jail booking and kitchen renovation project as reviewed by council. They were the lowest responsive responsible bid. Project is anticipated to start on or after today, June 15th, and be completed by February 28th, 2023. It is a budgeted project for this year. We did have two bids. Wald was the lowest responsive bidder. We did negotiate a final turnkey proposal that was all-inclusive, which did come in a little higher than what their initial bid was. Still, still within our budgeted amount, though. So.
Great.
Yeah. So once this is done, we can move forward with, this is just the design and engineering phase. So once we get that, we'll have a construction cost estimate that we can work off of budgetarily and put the project out for construction bid. So pretty exciting, yeah.
Finally.
Needs to be done.
Yeah.
It's been years in the making.
This one has been a long time coming.
It's been noodled for a while.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Being persistent.
Being kind.
Yeah, right?
Well, she.
Well, we don't want to move too fast on these things.
Oh, I know, I know. We got to get it done. The jail's important. To me, it's very important. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
We've worked this one over pretty hard, haven't we?
Pretty hard, haven't we?
It's good to see it happening, though. I'm excited to get this done. And we need to protect the county and the, and the folks that end up in our jails are important too, and they need to be, we need to have the safety precautions in there so we don't have any issues later.
I think the sheriff's pretty excited, too.
I bet he is, sure. And I want to thank the sheriff and his staff for working with you guys to get this thing done.
It'll be fun.
All right.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd move for the approval and authorization for the chair's signature on a bid award and contract in the amount of $396,650 to walled architects and engineering for design and engineering of the Montrose County Jail and booking kitchen renovation.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed nay. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. And Marty, thank you. Julie was phenomenal. She was awesome with our negotiations, so thank you very much.
It's nice having a great team, isn't it?
Okay, next, we're going to move to old business and opening the public hearing, planning the development on a possible resolution. Mr. White?
Thank you, Chair. Commission members, as stated, this is a public hearing. This is for the new zoning regulations. Our previous zoning was called the zoning resolution. We wanted to change that so that it made more sense in terms of how people look at the title. This, this item was heard by our, by your planning commission back in October. They sent that forward for your approval. You reviewed that at the beginning of the year, in January, February. Actually, you made the approval, but after the approval, you, we needed to still approve a resolution, which was not complete. During that time, there were some concerns from citizens and specifically on some definitions. You rescinded that original decision to say, staff, spend some time, make sure some of the definitions and other issues have been addressed, which we have done. So we've spent quite a bit of time working with the county manager and also with the county attorney to confirm that as we've reviewed everything to verify some of the legal issues in terms of definitions, to make sure there wasn't any concerns. We felt that that's been done correctly now and has been reviewed and re-reviewed to make sure this document is now right. Just to go back a little bit, part of the reason for updating the resolution to turn it into regulations was to basically modernize the document. We wanted, one, to clean a lot of issues up that were old and out of date, also just make the document easier to read. There's a lot of links in the documents. If you go on electronically, you can, you'll be in one section and if you want to learn about another section, you can actually click on that and it will take to the next section. So it's a little easier to read for the public. And we've outlined it a little differently and kind of set the document up a little more in a modern way of how most of the codes are probably created throughout the state of Colorado and probably throughout the nation. And there's, there really has been no major changes to this document. If I'd say there was anything that would be a major change, it would be the sign code. Since this original document was created back in the 70s and 80s, there really has been no changes to our sign code. However, with a lot of legis, I shouldn't say legislation, actions by the courts, we've had to go through and fix some of these issues with sign codes. Marty has been very helpful. She worked on the Yre County Sign Code. You have to be content neutral now. It's very clear. You have to be very careful how you write those codes. Marty's done a great job at doing that. So that's probably a big change that most of the public wouldn't know about. There really isn't much in terms of size of signs and things like that, but just making sure we're very content neutral so that no one would be able to take action against the county for sign issues. And most of the other areas in the code have pretty much stayed the same. There's been a little bit of tweaking on some of those areas. For example, agricultural stayed exactly the same. Mining and exploration of mining has stayed the same. We made one little change on exploration for mining, and that is requiring that they would get a permit from the Road and Bridge Division for access. We've had some experience in the past where someone has come in to do exploration and then damaged our road, and then we had to go deal with that. If they had to get a permit, it'd be in writing and there'd be no question. So we've, that's how we've looked at the document. We didn't want to do an overall change, but fix those little areas that needed some tweaking. And that's what this document has done. Again, it's been out for review and for numerous, numerous months, really over a year. We've been working on this and taking public comments and, and really trying to make this document fit Montrose County as we always do and as our planning commission does a great job. So staff would recommend that this document be approved. We do have a resolution before you today. There's often times where we delay the resolution and that gives the public some time to review. In this case, we feel as a staff that we've had plenty of time for review. You can, of course, we'll have opportunity to ask for the public, but I'm not aware of any public making any comment since we've, since you've originally approved it and gone to the planning commission and now we've had this chance to hear it again. Again, we've gone through the legal process to make sure it's advertised correctly in the newspaper and everything the state requires. And so we would also suggest that you approve the resolution, which means this document would be approved today and the new document would take place today. So from this point forward, after your approval, this new code is the code that the county would be using for any actions in zoning.
I have a question. It does say on the agenda, draft of new zoning. I'm assuming we're on our final.
Yeah, I would know, once you approve it, it's no longer a draft. And so what the, what we will do as staff, if you approve the resolution, we would remove any comments for draft, we would put a date on there of approval and then take that to the courthouse and record the new document. That new document would then be available online for the public.
Thanks.
Roger, anything?
Yeah, just, you know, it's been a long process and I want to thank you guys for staying on it and being diligent. And Planning Commission, I know they put in a ton of time. I want to thank them personally for what they do for us and really put a lot of thought into this to make sure that it, it fit Montrose County. And then our public comment, the folks that come in and actually worked with us on this, this is what makes this thing work, is when we, all three pieces work together. So I appreciate all the hard work and effort that went into it.
Glad we're getting it done. Anyway, is there any public comment? I noticed nobody has signed on the sheet. Going once, twice? Okay. I'm going to close the public comment period of time and.
We must have done it right, huh?
We did, we did. I'm going to ask for a motion on a resolution.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the adoption of Resolution Number 45-2022, adopting new zoning regulations.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed nay. Passed unanimously. This hearing is closed. I'm going to open another hearing on planning and development. Mr. Richmond, and it's about the San Juan Hut Special Use.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
And I, oh, I know, open the public comment part. Here we go.
Thank you. So for the San Juan Hut Special Use Permit, I do have a couple items to hand to you. These are letters in support of the proposal.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so the San Juan Hut Special Use Permit proposal is for special use to utilize a small hut for camping purposes. These camping purposes are for mountain bike riders who are, the hut lies on the trail between Durango and Moab, a 215-mile mountain bike trail. So a number of, excuse me, a number of mountain bikers use this hut, have used this hut for a number of years. The hut never received a special permit and the, the main reason it needs a special permit is because it's more of a temporary building, doesn't, structurally, it doesn't have a building permit. As, as stated, for temporary lodging, it's on a couple axles. It's a 16 by 16-foot building, has some kitchen facilities for small preparation of food, has some bunks for sleeping, and has a composting toilet on the site. So the subject property is 40 acres in size, but the, the area used for the special use permit is just a couple acres in the southeast corner. You can see here below, this is the area to the southeast and this is the hut here. And then the composting facility is over here. So water's hauled from Ridgeway Municipal Water and they have been approved by Ridgeway for that. And the composting toilet has been on site for a number of years. The applicant is, is in attendance here today and may be able to provide more details on that. Staff received a letter from an engineer that stated their approval for this seasonal use for this composting facility. And they, they outlined some details on, related to health and safety of the, of the composting toilet and approved that toilet. Access to the site is from U Road, so it's, it's a couple miles northeast of Paradox. So that's another consideration that it's so, it's such a primitive site, a composting facility would be allowed for this type of use. We have not received any comments from the public opposed to, opposed to the proposal. As mentioned previously, you have a couple letters from neighboring partners in the area that support the proposal. The planning commission does recommend approval and staff as well feels that it meets the criteria outlined in the zoning resolution for a special use permit. So we would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Would you be happy to?
Happy.
I do have a question. It's, it's in use right now. Why wasn't there a special permit done when it was initially started?
And Steve may be able to answer that a little better.
Do you? We were not aware that it was being operated. The reason that we found out is there is a neighboring property owner that contacted me and asked me if there was some type of permit required for this type of project. And that's what started the process. And as soon as I found out, I was able to notify the owner and the applicant came forward right away to apply for the special use permit.
So it's not a permanent structure? It's on wheels? Does that mean it'll be, it'll be removed or is it year-round?
It's, it stays in place. They do not move it. So it, it can be moved, but they don't move it. It has been moved since we've reviewed the, the original application because it was too close to the roadway, so it was moved further away from the road to be on the property. But again, we, we just were not aware of it. It is in the West End. It's a road that I would not travel unless I needed to do so and so.
And, and the owners own the entire 40?
So there's a, there's a 40-acre parcel under different ownership of the, of San Juan Hut. San Juan Hut, I believe, leases this site. That's why the area that is the lead, the special use is a smaller area, not the entire 40-acre parcel.
And did we get permission from the landlord? I mean, that's all?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Not, I've got two people that would like to speak. Kelly Ryan is one and the other is Joe Ryan. Would you like to speak? Okay, if you want to come forward, state your name and your address. Tell us a little bit about the project or the finished project, I guess.
Excuse me. My name is Joe Ryan and I started the business in '87. And if I could, this is a little bit off topic here, but with Sheldon's presentation before you today in April here, who've both used, utilized the hut system over the years. And we've been working with veteran groups for 20-plus years now. And there is a veteran group that's getting into town right today. Excuse me. And, okay.
Water.
And.
We'll get you some water.
We're hitting the trail on the 20th for a week-long veteran trip. And Purple Hearts Association has got a representative out for this trip. We've worked with Paralyzed Veterans of America on the Durango to Moab and Telluride to Moab bike routes. We've worked with paralyzed, paralyzed veterans of America and blinded veterans for these trips. And we've done ski trips through the system, Telluride, Yre, Delta Force, Dev Group, SEAL Team Six, Green Braves, who are from 10th Group, Fort Carson, who just finished a trip three days ago. And these are all complimentary trips. And it's a, it's a great program and I'd like to make it more involved with what you're all doing here. So anyway, that's not the purpose why I'm here before you. And this hut, veterans have used as well. If you can ask me any questions about the topic before you.
Personally, I think it's a great idea. It keeps people from just haphazardly camping in different areas. It keeps everything contained in one spot. It keeps our areas cleaned up. There's not a bunch of trash left by, and I'm not saying bicyclists do, but people leave trash. So this is a great idea. I think it's a great, great addition to the, to the West End over there in Paradox Valley.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is it, is it a hostel, almost like a hostel, like not everybody, like if I stayed there, somebody else would be staying there as well? there, somebody else would be staying there as well?
Well, the huts have bunks for eight, and there can be non-related parties staying there at the same time.
Okay.
That answers.
Okay.
Is there a cost to it?
Yes, there's a, the trip is $8.95 for the week, and that includes your food, water, and sleeping bags, and people carry their own sleeping bag liners. Thank you. And, what else can I say about it? It is a very clean, contained operation, and you just don't have that huge dispersion of use that we see all over the backcountry, and we all know how bad that is.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I just appreciate your putting all this together. I think it's wonderful, and what a great opportunity to get out and enjoy nature, and, and I'm assuming these are all backroads to this hut, pretty much?
On the, on the two mountain bike routes, of one of which we're talking about today, there's a standard route, which are logging, mining, ranching roads originally. And then, there's alternate single-track trails also for those who want to get out on more of a challenging trip. And.
Just riding from Naterita, Paradox would be challenging to me.
On the highway.
Not on a motorcycle.
Anyway, I think this is great that you're doing this, and there's literally hundreds of miles of trails and tracks over there that you could utilize if you so chose, if you were a biker.
Yeah.
But I think it's, it's great.
It, it all fits in with the Rimrocker and everything else that, and it's been really good for the West End to see all this additional tourism coming through their towns, and, because your folks stop and they spend money in the towns.
Oh, yeah.
Is the Basin Store open again, or is that still closed?
Um, well, you know.
Bedrock store?
Oh, the Bedrock, I'm sorry. The Bedrock.
It's currently closed. Anthony, who was running it, I guess is moving to Mexico.
Okay.
Selling it, but it was open last summer, and, yeah, it was a popular stop for ice cream and cold drinks. And the previous owner also, they, they basically email us and have us email them their, our schedule, so they know, make sure to be open when.
That's good.
Group of bikers comes through.
Yeah.
It's a special place to stop. We have pictures of the family there when I was.
That big?
Great school. So, it's, it's, it's a lot of history there, and Paradox Valley's a very special place.
When people come down off the Catch 'Em Up Trail, and it's 100 degrees, they love to get on that concrete front there, which is so cool.
Yeah.
And get the ice cream, the cold drinks, and all that.
Yeah.
All right, great.
Any other comments? Kelly, would you like to speak or not?
I'm, I'm okay as long as there's no other questions.
No.
Okay.
I think we're good.
With that, I'm going to close the public comment period of time, and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I would move for the exceptions, the approval of the San Juan Special Huts Use SU 21-013.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Passed unanimously.
Congratulations.
You're legal now.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Right. Thanks for coming down.
Drive safe back to Ridgeway. That high was horrible.
It is bad.
And it's under construction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to open another public hearing on Weimer Ranch's 2022 Rezoning, and open the public comment period of time. Tomage, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Weimer Ranch's 2022 Rezone is a proposal to rezone 120 acres from light industrial to general agricultural. This property is out just west of the New Kla Hopkins Field Airport. I'll highlight it on the screen for you. It's this portion outlined in red. This portion is also shown. That's on the, the next item on the agenda. So, this portion's being proposed to be rezoned from, again, from light industrial to general agricultural. It meets all the, it meets all the criteria outlined in the zoning resolution. It's been zoned for light, as light industrial for some time, but has always been used for general agricultural. There's cattle out there, and, and the master plan designates it for agricultural, rural, residential uses. It's, it's a very straightforward rezone, and we have heard no concerns from the public or from the planning commission.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the public would like to address us about this? Commissioners?
No. Pretty straightforward.
That's, I'm going to close the public comment part, and I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Weimer Ranch's rezone from light industrial to general ag.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, and this would be RZ 22-007, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Passed unanimously. Close this hearing, open another hearing on Weimer Ranch 2022 Parcel Number Two Rezone, and public comment period of time is open.
Thank you. Again, this, this is the same proposal. It, it's a separate item due to the fact that it's a, technically under different ownership and is not connected to this property. So, it's connected at a point, so it's technically a different parcel, but same, same proposal. Yes, I assume same family, and same thing, light industrial to general ag, and no concerns.
All right.
Comments? Anybody from the public would like to address us on this? Hearing none. Commissioners?
No.
Hearing none. Public comment period of time is closed. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I would move for the approval of the Weimer Ranch 2022 Parcel Two Rezone RZ 22-008.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Passed unanimously. And that takes care of the hearings. This hearing is closed. Next is the minor subdivisions, item number five, Tomage Richmond, and MI 22-007.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll briefly go through each of these minor subdivisions, if that's okay. The Church Road Ranch Minor Subdivision did have a question concern at the beginning that we can discuss now. This proposal is to divide a 15-and-a-half-acre lot into two lots. They're just splitting off one acre here on the, on the front towards Church Road. The property is north of Falcon Road, obviously on Church Road. Again, no concerns from planning commission or staff. We'd recommend approval. The concern brought up by the owner, dealing with signatures for lenders, it is following, typically following approval of a minor subdivision, we would contact the applicant, let them know it's been approved, and they're good to, they're all set to print out the Mylar and get signatures. So, following your approval, we are happy to send a letter to any, any lender and confirm that it has been approved so that they are good to sign on that. So, typically, that's how it works, and rarely do we see any concerns from that.
Okay. Any questions, sir? Would you like to, or you're, you've been answered?
Thank you. I'm just curious as to when I could anticipate an attorney's sign and authorize that letter.
Oh, could I get you to say your name and address again, please? Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you like that, but.
Michael DePrae, 6859 Church Road, Olathe.
Thank you.
And if Michael wouldn't, wouldn't mind sticking around till after the meeting, we can discuss that with him.
Okay, great.
Great.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, you can have a motion. Waiting for that.
I know. I just, I wanted to check something real quick.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Church Road Ranch Minor Subdivision, M122-007.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Passed unanimously. Item number six, MI 22-011, Silva Minor Subdivision.
Thank you. The Silva Minor Subdivision's a proposal to subdivide a 4.83-acre lot into three lots. This property is on 6450 Road, south of Kentucky. So, it's in the 201 boundary, so the city did review this and had no concerns or comments for us. Each lot will share access, and it's a pretty, pretty straightforward subdivision.
The subdivision plat does not show that access. Are we concerned with that?
So, if you'll.
Or at least I was not able to.
So, I can, I can point out to you on the screen, there's this label here for a 30-foot access and utility easement.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
And that, it's obviously 30 feet wide. It, it follows the south boundary to Lot Two, and then heads south to Lot.
So, it's that little flag there.
Yeah.
So, once it gets into Parcel Two, then it turns and goes into Parcel Three.
Correct.
So, we're covered there. Okay, thank you. I missed a note.
No problem.
Any other questions? Not entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I would move for the approval of the Silva Minor Subdivision, MI 22-011.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Passed unanimously. Item number seven, Summers Minor Subdivision, MI 22-016.
Summers Minor Subdivision's a proposal to divide a 26-acre parcel into three lots. There are two homes existing on the property, so they're really separating those homes and then creating a lot to the south here. That's, that's vacant. This is on West Oak Grove, west of 6100 Road, and the planning commission recommends approval.
Okay, questions?
No questions for me.
No.
Pretty straightforward.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Summers Minor Subdivision, number MI 2020, MI 22-016.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Passed unanimously. We're going through this relatively quick. Item number eight, Walter Grumley Subdivision, MI 22-023. Steve? Okay, great.
This is another straightforward one. This is off Choo Choo Lane. It's a three, three-and-a-half-acre parcel they're splitting into two for their child to build a home on the, on the second property. So, no concerns from the planning commission.
Entertain a motion.